We will, just to be sure, we have a full board out there. I am here at Blondell. I see board member Jennifer Norris. I see trustee Trapp, Wang, and DeCray, deputy mayor, Brent Kowalczek is in my main screen. He must be making the 12 front and center here. So we do have, everybody's in, we do have a quorum and folks are joining on and seeing people come in. But what we thought we'd do is just in line with the current reality of COVID-19 open meeting law. I just want to restate for the record that we're complying with governor's orders 202.1, which enables us to do remote sized virtual meetings. We don't have to involve where each board member is, but like I said, they're all present and on the call right now. Has been noticed in line with our page notification to the media and publishing on our front door entrance areas, which is compliant. We do take minutes and we can transcribe it and we do record the meeting. It's being recorded. We do also follow the quorum of normal in-person meetings where we have a public comments section later in a meeting. Everybody's in time to listen and hold their questions till they come up at that point. But this essentially is a board meeting to transact the business of the village's Red Hook. As we start all our meetings in person, we usually do with the regions. The virtual methodology, we just make a quiet moment of contemplation for all of us to consider those that have been affected by COVID, current events, and give a quiet moment of thanks to our essential workers and first responders. And like we know, right in our building, many of our staff that are reporting are essential workers and they are on the front line of certain exposures and their first responders, whether it be PD or FD or are out there now. So let's just do a short moment of silence for them and in your honor. Okay, thank you. We had on your agenda there, we'll start with the top portion, minute approval. We had one meeting in May, it was May 2020. We circulated the minutes. I had reviewed them. I would ask that if there are any other additions, alterations, or corrections, are there any such changes recommended? Hearing none, make a motion. We approve those minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
And that was by who was that? Trapp?
Trapp.
Mr. Trapp, thank you. Any other discussion or changes we should consider? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's a, I'll do, we'll call it's a mundane piece of business, but Blondell, I, Trapp, I heard. And then Wang, how'd you vote?
Aye.
And Norris? Jen, you vote, you accept them, you approve the minutes, Jen?
I have muted myself. Aye.
And Brent, are you there for, you approved him? Okay, thank you. What I thought we'd do before we jump into some of the business parts of our meetings. We had two things going on fairly recently. At the last meeting, we announced that we'll call the retirement of longtime ZBA member and chair, George Beekman. I don't think he's on here in the technology world. I don't know if he wants to join anymore. But when we go back to analog meetings, I'm sure we'll see George back in our audience. But we did put a proclamation together and we'll put it in a fancy outline, a folder for him. We do see him and hand it to him. But we did, in the resolution part of it, that we stayed as a board and all on behalf of all the village residents, that we recognize George Beekman for his commitment, hard work, and service to the community. His example in service benefited the village of Red Hook and all its residents. On behalf of the village of Red Hook, we extend our sincere thanks. And it's dated today and signed by me. So he was a volunteer for a long time in a technical world. And then also tonight, we'll talk a little more later, but a different proclamation. This is for an employee who's leaving us. We did mention that we knew this was happening and it's not a surprise to anybody on the board with, but I thought just to have her package here, the same type of proclamation slash resolution that we recognize Cynthia Sharella for her commitment, hard work, and service to the community. Her example in service benefited the village of Red Hook and all its residents. On behalf of the village, we extend her our sincere thanks and wish her a great environment. So like we said at the last meeting, when we all got elected, I think we gained a bunch of weight because the staff here were great chefs and cooks and bakers and things. That's changed a lot over the years, but also with the COVID world, we're just not coming in much here anymore. We're trying to honor the restrictions on keeping our staff levels low and space distance between our people. To figure out something that last week, Cindy's last, June 26th, that's the last day of her work here. We have agreed that she will do a per hour consulting if and when needed to our new treasurer, who will come in full force and at her retirement. But we still need to figure out, we wouldn't make her bake the cake. She was one of our key bakers, but um, we'll have to take some suggestions and uh, do something where we do a six foot cake eating staggered party or something like that. But sincere congratulations to her and to George for their help over the years. And in Cindy's case, she's qualified and she's going to do retirement. It's not like she's departing the area, I don't think, but that's her call. Anyway, I wanted to get that off and normally we probably have cake here at the meeting if we could, right? I think, or we will probably, if you want to pencil in, I think we're going to need a workshop here on June 18th, which I think is the third, third thing. Yes. So we will talk once more as a group before we actually retires. The reason we're working on that, we call it the Water Loop Project. We're selling water to the Christian development and then we want to continue with a circular loop supply system that'll pick up south on Route 9 and under Route 9 there to pick up some potential development if in and around the Hardscrabble Plaza someday and at the Burn Down Ross Brothers Building. And we've got contracts and we've got easements and trying to get it all pulled together for June 18th. So we're going to work on that. Be something like, we don't have it ready tonight. So I'd like to get that done before another month transpires, if at all possible. We've been in the loop, no pun intended, for quite a while. It's not a surprise to the board, but it's getting the final wording and details down on paper. All that said, we are now June 8th, like we said in the meeting, and it's a new fiscal year for us. And that means the old one closed. The board should-
Is anybody else seeing that? The Lori Urban iPhone pop up every once in a while?
I do, yeah.
Okay.
We have circulated the treasurer's report, which is effective May 31, 2020 balance. What we do is we try to clear out as many payments of that prior fiscal year as possible early in June. So we can begin our AUDs and that analysis we do. But looking over the report, I went through it and made some head highlights of the call. But let's go over the big numbers first. We can talk in detail. So does everybody have a piece of paper to look at? But account balances, according to my printout from the treasurer, general fund is $335,807. Water fund, $51,916. Trust and agency, $17,323. Petty cash is that $71 number we generally see. Village green, $4,149. Hardscrabble, $4,243. Health insurance, $8,891. Sewer fund, $30,026. I like to recite the reserve checking balances and explain one part like we normally do. Fire department, we'll call these, we'll use a better term, these are reserve funds. Fire department, $5,025. Police, $14,436. USDA short-term asset, $110,593. Highway, $20,756. Snow reserve, $3,229. Tower reserve, $17,702. Unemployment reserve, $5,516. Court reserve, $3,271. Office reserve, not much, $945.96. That poor reserve's a little shy there. Expenses in the month of May would have been $65,504. That's in the general fund. Water fund was $5,175. Trust and agency, $17,323. And sewer, no expenses. I guess one thought Cindy on the TNA, $17,323, that sounds like one pay cycle. Would there be another one coming or doesn't quite sound like the normal amount? But before I ask for approval, we'll see if Cindy has a comment on that. But attached to it were the TNA recaps, the water fund recap.
The way the calendar runs, if you look at the report, that's the balance on the report right now. Trust and agency, transaction by the account.
Okay. Let's see, attached to her general report that we just read were the specifics. Going through it in your packets, there's the June 19 through May 2020 recap. Everything processed to date. There will be some later arrivals in June that'll be booked back to the prior fiscal year. Yes?
I want you to, I want to note that all the reserve checking balances, I'm waiting for a callback from M&amp;T Bank because they have been charging us $12.50 on the majority of them and they were not in the beginning. They started in Jan, in January, but I'm still waiting for Patty from M&amp;T to call me back to get them removed. If hopefully they will. Because some of these balances, you know, a couple of them are not that big. The office reserve, you know, tapping in $12 a month will eventually deplete the balance.
Quite frankly, we created long reserves in the past few years. We did not create office reserve and we've not been funding that. So but the big ones we created were fire department, you've increased contribution to police and highway. And then, you know, the USDA is huge. Like I always remind the board, if you look at the upper balance, it's $5,000, but the short-term asset repair fund is $110,000. We really have $160,000 there to address. Granted, the short-term asset fund is targeted to things that break that are short-term assets, which is much of our system that can break is more in the short-term asset world.
And again, that USDA number, that's a requirement for our loan obligation for the water project. We're required by USDA to put aside $25,000 a year.
Yeah. Looking at budget recap, you know, some of the ones I highlight where I have a couple of questions and we asked the financial staff to answer them, but overall there's no surprises. Couple lines we have to analyze a little more, but many of them we made changes in this fiscal year already. If you look, zoning personal services is over quite a bit, but that's because we had an interim code enforcement situation, which we're changing effective June 1. That's a board agreement and board concurrence. Seems to be working already. The first week, Clark's been in here with Lara and so forth, but let's not get into those details. You look at some of our big budget lines, in the PD world, it came in at 101.3% of budget, which is a big budget line, pretty darn close to being dead on, which is good. That's when we try to monitor you along. Like I said, zoning went over, but that we knew was happening. We're working. We've got a correction in place for that. And with a couple there is we could talk about, but looks okay. There was some shortfall in fines and forfeited bail. It's a combination of case hearing and then COVID shutting down the courts for essentially three months. So something we'll have to deal with next season, the next year, when the courts come live and we'll talk a little about that with us. All those things being reviewed here, I would ask, if the board has any questions and putting forth a, putting forth in the form of a motion that we accept the treasurer's report as submitted. I'll ask for a second. Is there a second?
Second.
And then either discussion or ideas or questions before we approve them. So we have motion in a second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? You'll go that way. Here, no opposition. Let's keep it in the record. Next thing on the agenda for me, still to keep talking, is Red Hook Village monthly police report totals for the month of May 2020. Incidents, you might notice they're creeping up and I have reviewed it and I think I have the answer why. It's 533 incidents. Breakout is 393 in the town. And then joining right now is a little man, look like he's trying to get in here, meaning on the computer. Town of Red Hook, we're 137 incidents and the village of Tivoli were three. Traffic tickets issued were 32, it's like six in the village and 26 in the town. Arrests were nine, four in the village and five in the town of Red Hook. And when I was going through the incidents, like I said, it's creeping up. But what they've been doing is with the business shutdown over the past, I guess, 100 days it is now, in many shapes and forms, as much activity in and around the businesses at night. So they've been doing what are called security checks in the attached papers there. And so you'll see quite a few of them, starting on page five from the police pro report. And then that's the detail I have. You have, well, except that. We could then move, like Mr. Trustee Trapp, you appear as item number three on committee and department reports. Do you have your stuff there? Do you need any help with anything?
No, sir, I'm ready to go here.
Okay.
Alrighty, we'll get right into the planning and zoning report. May 2020, there were nine building permits issued. One certificate of occupancy was issued. There were five certificates of compliance issued. No municipal searches, no orders to remedy, no stop work orders, no court appearances and no fire inspections. There were two complaints. It's interesting, I'm getting some of these in my other job. COVID complaints about the number of people and that sort of thing. So that's, that's kind of a new item on the horizon for us. There was one noise complaint and six inspections. And it's very cool, the planning board had their meeting, they had a training for Ring Central and then they had a meeting via Ring Central. They had two items on the agenda and the ZBA had a training for Ring Central and they had a meeting via Ring Central, which is very cool. We're, we're moving into the new normal here with, with great aplomb, I suppose here. So and the trustee report, May 2020, the building department took in $1,024. And on my, my other hat, the Planning Federation is, we're preparing and we have decided that going forward, at least for the, for the near term, as far as we can see, all of our Planning Federation Board of Directors meetings are going to be virtual. And we decided that all of our presentations are going to be virtual for the time being. And we went through a number of options in terms of what classes we might present. And Heather LeVarneway will be sending that to everyone for distribution in short order. And this year, I'm up for reelection as, as prez. It's a, it's a three-year term on the board and two-year term as president. So I threw my hat in the ring and told them that I had interest again. So we shall see what goes down here. I'm looking forward to working with those guys. We've got some new folks on the board, new blood and very, very motivated people. So I think we're going to have some really interesting presentations coming up in the next year or so. I think that's, I just wanted to, wearing my peace, love and Red Hook shirt here. So trying to keep things nice and sweet here on this whole process.
Nice, yeah.
I think that's, that's it for me. So keep it short and sweet.
That's, it's like, even though things are somewhat remote, even in the building planning world, there's a fair amount of activity. And we might have talked about some of us individually, but you do see an uptick in deck construction and backyard pools and different things like that are going to keep the planning and the buildings-
I had five applications for swimming pools last week.
It'll be the home staycation world. And $1,000. Okay, thank you, Jen.
Yes, sir.
Now, why don't we slide to trustee Norris? You have your paperwork and things there, Jen?
I do.
Give us what you have there.
Okay. For the month of May, we sold $1,740 in garbage tags and we paid out $929.99. We had 8.62 tons of garbage and 2.5 tons of recycling, which breaks down as 1.69 tons of commingled, 0.45 tons of newspaper and 0.36 tons of cardboard. And just a reminder, through the end of June, if you buy garbage tags remotely, you will be free. As you recall, last month, we canceled Hardscrabble Day. There is discussion with some organizations in the village about an alternative. There's talk of like a reverse parade or other sorts of things. It's all in the works. Obviously, we have no idea where we'll be in September. Things might be better, things might be worse. But there is talk of an alternative. So I will keep you posted if anything comes to fruition on that. And that's all I have.
Thanks. And as far as Jen mentions, alternative, it's more of a virtual. She attended a Zoom meeting on it on behalf of the Hardscrabble Committee in the village. And one was when she used the word reverse parade in a report back to me, I was like, what in the world is that? But it's essentially you make a float and you leave it stationary and somebody photographs it. But I had a further thought, we could do that, same thing, and Will Noonan might be on, but we could sit in lawn chairs in front of our houses and somebody could film us like a parade going by and then edit it all together. So like it looks like people are watching the parade somehow.
I thought a reverse parade was, was to set all the floats up in one place and let everybody drive by them.
Yeah. One of the things that we were discussing is that people are going to be out of their minds sick of Zoom meetings by that point. So the last thing you want to do on a Saturday is stare at the screen and watch a parade. So it's more of the float, you know, it's like in front of the library and people drive by kind of.
Oh, cool.
But you know, again, that's, that's, who knows, you know, and then, and we'll see how things go. Who knows where we'll be in September?
On a related note, you talked about Hardscrabble Day being closed. I assume everyone heard they're canceling the Duchess County Fair for the first time in 175 years.
Yeah. And this could be a huge economic bang to a lot of people.
So, yeah.
And even some of our merchants here, they taste buds and folks, they put a big presence. They own, not own, but they rent space at the fair and it's got to knock their cash flow quite hard. All right, Jen, thank you. You know, when I look at garbage, if you look at the year-end financials for last fiscal year, it held its own as far as revenue to expenses and even including paying the, paying the one day's wages for the highway department that it incurs there. So it's good. I think, when I try to do the math, we know how many tags we sell, we know the dollars. My sense is we have between 150, 180 customers. That's households. So we're still fighting the fight against the big noisy big guys, but we'll keep doing it. Anyway, looks like another utility we provide or a service we provide is clean, safe drinking water. We did circulate our annual water quality report. That went out in a separate mailing a couple of weeks ago. But Mr. Wang, are you there with your data and info sheets?
I am.
Pour it in, sir.
Absolutely. So during the month of May, the water treatment facility treated 8,165,300 total gallons, which is an average of 263,400 gallons per day. I know you can see the little, little bar chart. It's, it's not good. It's going in the wrong direction. Our usage seems to be heading upwards from a fairly high average already. Maybe that's because of all these new swimming pools that he keeps on approving.
I think they got them in yet, but uh-
Right. That would be, that would be quick. So we also sent three samples out for testing at the Smith Environmental Labs in Hyde Park and testing for coliform and E. coli. And that, all three tests came back absent for both bacteria. And during the month of May, the water treatment plant used 80 gallons of sodium hypochlorite. And that's an average daily use of 2.58 gallons per day. So, yeah, I mean, the, the increase in, in, in water volume that's been treated is a little bit of a concern. I mean, it has been hot and dry and maybe it's just a blip. So we'll keep an eye on it.
There are a lot of new gardens out there too, and people are taking, you know, and watering.
And I also might suggest that more people stay home, therefore using facilities more rather than the ones that work because they're not going to work. And I know Ellen and I are running our dishwasher twice as much as we used to because we're having all three meals at home instead of me, you know, having lunch out when I'm at the court. So that could be a two, Charlie.
Yeah, no, that's, that's going to be a factor. And then, you know, those pretty gardens at Traditions, I mean, they, they got to use a lot of water as well.
Well, they're buying a little markup, which is good. And I know last month we did consider COVID and this month is a little higher. Last month was 236, if I remember right. This is 260 per gallon, gallon, you know, 100,000 gallons per day. Fernando, our operator, did send a cover note indicating he would talk to Rural Water. Just, that's a cooperative type agency that would help us search for leaks. Our sense is we're not seeing a drastic bump up, but on the other hand, it's like, with our good soils, we don't percolate up a lot of times and, but it wouldn't hurt. And rural water is not a big cost to have them come around and do a little research with us. We'll go ahead with that. And like we said last meeting, last month, we do plan to do hydrant flushing system work. I'm looking across my conference table, we have a big graphic and a big plan for how our highway guys will do circular type flush, a little more scientific flushing, but we'll get notices out to the public on that when we get closer. Put up on our website. It's the usual drill of you'll see some lower pressure. You might see some cloudiness, but the water is still safe, kind of a rule. So it'll be coming up.
Turbidity.
There you go. English, English major. Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you.
If we could put a thought in our heads, in the same packet that Fernando circulated to us with the data and concept of using rural water. Fernando works for VRI, which is a water operator. They all operate sewage treatment plan that's currently owned by Anderson Common, wrong word, by Redo Commons. And in the not-too-distant future, when we have Brent through his report later, we will be taking ownership of that. And we asked, we've asked them to quote and work with us on being an operator of that. Make certain logical points because we already work with them. They already operate that sewage treatment plan. Being an operator of that makes certain logical points because we already work with them. They already operate that sewage treatment plan. And we also chat with them in our Friday brainstorming sessions. Trying to redevelop and strengthen our water monitoring and water operations. So they put something in, in, in writing to us. Essentially it'd be a per hour kind of a rate and I don't know if Brent's going to talk about it later or not, but we could. Put that when Brent's finished with his reports, why don't we talk about that when people have a bigger sense of where we are on a couple of different projects? Okay, Brent? The company mayor would like to talk about highway infrastructure, streets, sidewalks, architecture and historic resources. Village Green and Reddick together. So. Why don't you go, Brent, and we'll listen.
All right. I'll start with the, uh, the Village Green monthly report and the related budget accounts. We're all in, uh. In the black this year as we end this fiscal year. There were no Village Green committees held during the month of May. And anyone interested in having a tree or trees planted on their adjacent sites or volunteering for planting days. To support the Village Greens, various community beautification projects, they contact David Pearson, myself, or the village clerk. And now we are gathering estimates for tree removal and tree pruning. There has been. Some trees that we've looked at already, um, most of them have come from the property owners themselves. A lot of healthy woodpeckers out there. There's some holes and, and quite a few trees caused by woodpeckers and some even cause. Major limbs to come down. Um, so we are, if you see a blue ribbon on the tree, do not take it down. Um, those trees are slated to be removed. We need those to get a good estimate on that. So, um. Leave, leave the ribbons on the trees alone because we, we do need those things. And those trees, like I said, have already been slated. Uh, we're hoping that the property owners will permit us to, um, replace those with trees as we go forward, but these. Trees that we have cited are, are dangerous and, um. Have to be taken care of immediately. Uh, on the highway monthly report, um, the highway department continues to pick up leaves and brush every first and third Mondays. Or when their schedule permits, it's sometimes on Fridays. Um, residents are reminded to place lawn debris and brush in separate piles, curbside and not in the road. And please limit the size of the brush piles to no bigger than six feet by six feet by six feet. And tree branch is no longer, no larger than six inches in diameter. And any brush that includes tree trunks, stumps, brass clippings, garbage and construction material will not be picked up. And we're still looking at, um, purchasing a new truck, um, cabinet chassis for the highway department to replace track number fourteen. Uh, we have received estimates on this and, and developed a. Uh, way of allocating funds from various accounts and we are still waiting on what we're going to receive consolidated highway improvement. Program from the state. Um, I think they're still deliberating in, in the assembly and the senate. But the budgets, uh. They anticipated that the state budgets could be hit pretty hard by. Um, the COVID virus and pandemic. And so we're, we're waiting to see what, what that's going to reflect on a local level. Um, we've had discussions with the state county law on local levels regarding the New York State this year, twenty twenty. And again, that's, that's what I said that we're. We're waiting for that. So the chips. Program does pay for some of our street repaving and new equipment purchases. So. We get quite a bit. We, we use those things to our advantage and. Still going forward. Um, this month, there was no revenue generated from the sale of scrap metal. So the end of this fiscal year, we've generated. Two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty-five cents just by reselling scrap. Scrap metal. And since we started the program back in two thousand and seven. We have raised thirty-one thousand, five hundred and two dollars and twelve cents. And this revenue is used by equipment and tools for the highway, water materials management. Um, departments and anyone interested in donating, um, will accept it and we'll even help you by picking up. Scrap metal upon request. Um, the Reddick infrastructure and intermunicipal, I'll start with the task force. That's the task force hasn't met at all for the last couple of months due to the, uh. Pandemic. So hopefully that'll come back at some point in time and, um, will resume work left off by short-term rentals. On the Reddick sewer project, we had meetings via telephone conference calls on May first, fifth, eighth, fifteenth and twenty. Twenty-second and twenty-ninth, one, two, three, four, five, six meetings during the month of May. Discussed the New York State DEC. Redder speeds permitted to operate the former Reddick Commons wastewater treatment plan on May first. Further permit for the Reddick Commons Sewer Works Corporation to the village of Reddick was originally requested. Although the transfer form was submitted procedurally, this could not be processed, the transfer. Since it is a change in permit type. Sewer Works Corporation will continue to pay for operations until the donation agreement for. The ownership of the wastewater treatment plant and land is finalized between Reddick Commons and the village of Reddick. So officially according to DEC, that's our plant, but by ownership responsibility, we did not own it yet. And Reddick Commons will continue to operate until such time that we sign the donation agreement. On the easements, we've been working very hard on trying to secure easements. There were three outstanding easements all located on East Market Street. We have one that came to a conclusion. Two acres that, uh, we made offers to, um. And then, and one was informally agreed to. We still haven't had a signature on the easement on that.
Actually came in today, Brent. Like Coon.
Okay, good. So we had two other ones. We, we made some very good offers on those. Um, one, uh, like essentially they agreed to. But we still haven't had a signed easement, um, from the property owner. In the meantime, that course, that case is still pending with the Supreme Court in Duchess County. So if they do not sign, we do have some recourse. The third one, um, we did get a decision by the Supreme Court in our favor and, um. They still have the obligation or the. To, to appeal and to refile. And so we have made a counter offer. And going forward on that. So that. Every week it seems like we've been working on some, some fun with the easement with, with the property owner and their attorneys. So we're getting close. We're getting real close. The construction schedule, we do anticipate going out for bid. At the end of this month, June or early two thousand and twenty. There'll be a sixty-day bid period, followed by reviewing and awarding of the construction contracts. And once the contracts have been awarded, an eighteen-month construction period is anticipated. And we expect to be substantially complete by the end of December, twenty twenty-one. And, uh, hopefully do our final closing sometime in two thousand and twenty-two. So we're moving forward on that. And like I said, if we could secure the agents and we're working with, um. The owners of Reddick Commons to finalize and get those documents signed for the donation agreement, which will be for the. Wastewater Treatment Plant and the, the ten acres of land that would accompany that. And as Ed mentioned, the, the old farm road water loop project, we'll be talking about that, I believe, at our workshop. Nate, so I won't go into much detail on that. Um, the village of Reddick Water Sewer Distribution Systems and Administrative Improvement Projects. We did have a conference call. With Fernando Dango of C three N D Environmental Consulting. On May twenty-second, and we discussed a fire hydrant flushing schedule that was originally prepared by CT Mail. With provisions by Delaware Engineering and the village will be notifying water customers as Ed had mentioned of the schedule to. Prepare them and possible interruptions in water discoloration, which may result from the hydrant flushing. We also reviewed and discussed the mending and renewing the intermunicipal agreement. Between the town of Reddick and the village of Reddick for emergency interconnection between the two municipal water systems. That's in other town and the village water interconnect, um, has tentatively been scheduled for Wednesday, July sixth. And the booster pumps at the wells will be temporarily turned off. And well will be drawn from the elevated tanks. So we'll be monitoring the pressure, both as water comes in from the town and also. As the water comes from the village into the town. So we'll look at both pressures and see what, if we need any modifications. Um, also CN, C three N D has been directed by the village of Reddick to prepare a proposal. Um, outlining costs, services, responsibilities regarding administering the village's water distribution system. And treatment and maintenance operations. The proposal will include maintaining a regular hydrant flushing. And valve exercising schedule, coordinating workers, administrative oversight of billings. And notification of impending or outstanding items and need to be addressed by the board trustees. And we also discussed with C three N D, um, future operations of the Reddick Municipal Sewer System. And, um. Fernando has been in contact with CT Mail, who are the engineers of the wa, of the sewer system. That is from the Aranco Company, which are making the pumps for the individual septic tanks. Uh, C three N D has been directed to prepare a proposal to operate and maintain the sewer dirt. Distribution system and operations of the wastewater treatment plant. Routine septic tank pumps and open pumping schedule for grease traps and septic tanks. Billing oversight and wastewater treatment plant operations and repairs and troubleshooting will be included in the proposal. So we should be getting a proposal, I would think in the next week or two from Fernando. That's all good. Very busy on the sewer. So like I said, we're hoping to go out to bed and end of this month. Um, on some of the other committees I sit with in the town, we've had actually no meetings for the Reddick. So a review committee, the community preservation funded advisory board. And the Saltkill Watershed Community is now up to issue seven on their, on their newsletter. But they're not having meetings either, but they are circulating newsletters with articles by. Officers of the, of the watershed community and, and also our college interns. Um, the town of Reddick Local Waterfront Revitalization Program Working Group. We will be actually having our first meeting on Thursday. It'll be done, uh, via Zoom. And we are working on reviewing the revisions made to section two, which is inventory and analysis of. Of the local waterfront revitalization plan. And there are no meetings at the Northern Duchess Alliance Executive Committee. And also the village of Reddick zoning review committee has been laid low. Um. However, I did have a conversation with. Anna that we're considering to hire and she is preparing a contract for us to sign to review. What we've been working on with the revisions of the zoning map and, um, we're trying to get that through. She'll be helping us prepare the secret documents for hopefully a neck deck on that. And that is all I have.
Thank you, Brent. I think for all of us on the board, if you could. Pages that, um, start with the heading intermunicipal task force. In particular, um, the last page in the packet where you talked about C three N D, mental consulting. I do have somewhere info on that and. I'd like to get into that. When we get to that part of the, uh, under here, the regular business part of the agenda. So if you keep that piece of his report out separately for everybody, so we can look at that together again. Online and Zoom and in central format, we do have, um, Judge Pete Blaster, we have an agenda and. Say a few things and then let him talk. But part of it, we did circulate to the board, the court audit for the prior fiscal year. Which the court has looked at and Joe and I have talked about a little bit. So. When he wraps up talking, we could have a discussion with him too. But we, one of the requirements, the village board of any village has to get a quarter done. And it's limited in extent and, um, context, which you'll see in that report sent to you. But, um. We do have to, if we approve it, accept it and then send it off to the. New York State Level OCA and DC, the different people Jonah reports to. Well, you, uh, you want to give us some, not so much on the audit directly, but maybe the big picture and the small and we'll. Work with Jonah on, um. Where the court is headed and a couple of planning decisions we all have to make, um, to address what we're seeing happening in the court world and assisting of justice and so forth. So. The floor is yours, Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ed. And good evening, everyone. Uh, before I get into the court report, a couple of personal notes. First of all, I'm delighted to see Bill Noonan. Bill and I, more years ago, and he and I would care to admit fought the good fight as labor activists. And it's great to see him. How are you, Bill? And speaking of my, uh, checkered career, this is my fiftieth year in government. I worked for a lot of fifty, yeah. I started out when I was twenty in the police academy and, um. Worked in a lot of different agencies, a lot of different levels, worked with a lot of excellent people, but none more dedicated. None more energetic and none classier than our village clerk and treasurer, Cindy Shirella. So Cindy, on behalf of the court family, I want to wish you a very, very happy and healthy retirement. Uh, don't be a stranger. Bring baked goods. We love you, right?
Yeah.
We love you, darling. All right. Now, getting on to what's happening in the court. Uh, as you know, on Thursday, the Hudson Valley will be entering phase two. Uh, we were shut down cold by order of the administrative, chief administrative judge in Albany. Couldn't do anything. Stay out of their office. Don't do anything. Which we did because we obey the orders. Uh, and then things started to open up at my request, uh, as state magistrate's president, they started to allow. Uh, court staff back in the office to catch up on deposits and mail and the backroom stuff. As long as only one person at a time and everything got wiped down after, which, which we have been doing. Now that we're in phase two, uh, we're going to be able to conduct, uh, small claims proceedings as long as everybody is, you know, six foot away and wears their mask and that sort of thing. Dangerous dog hearings we conduct in person. Uh, I can decide. Motions on, uh, papers or ask for, uh, oral argument in a forum like this, using Skype for business where everybody's in a little, uh, video box. This is something new. Again, I requested this on behalf of the state magistrates. Number of weeks ago, they've agreed that we can now. Adjudicate guilty pleas on traffic tickets and send letters. Uh, advising the defendant how much the fine is and ask them to pay it. This was something that was absolutely frozen for months. I'm doing arraignments online for our very fine Reddick Police and also for the, uh, troopers and the sheriff's office. That will continue. Um, what will not happen, even at least in phase two, is a. Oh, uh, new dangerous dog case. I think I said that. Okay. What will not happen is a traffic calendar, like we used to have a hundred, so some other people come in. Twice a day on the first Wednesday to go through all the guilty pleas. I have asked permission. To have our traffic prosecutor handle those in direct correspondence with the defendant. And if they come up with an agreement. Uh, to, to propose that agreement to me in writing. And then I can decide that at my desk, the same way I decide the guilty pleas. The problem is section eighteen oh six of the vehicle and traffic law. Is read by the higher ups in the court system, and I can see why they read it that way, that they must make an appearance. To adjudicate a dicket, a ticket. They must make an appearance in person. Now, the governor's executive orders and administrative orders of the chief administrative judge have done away with a lot of. Time limits and other requirements. So we're asking that that happen as well. This is a no contact method. Of handling, uh, the not guilty pleas, which will allow us to get rid of a very substantial backlog. I've got about. Uh, three hundred, three hundred and fifty tickets backlog between the village and the town and a lion's share of those are in the town. Now, before we can do any of these in-person stuff, oh, one more thing I should mention. We cannot do evictions and foreclosures. Those are still frozen by the governor. Okay? So before we do any of the in-person stuff, I sent you, uh, earlier this afternoon, a memo of May twenty ninth. Uh, regarding the safety protocols that would be required in the court system. Um, face masks, the village has. The, uh, spray, the, uh, uh, sanitizer the village has. And I believe, uh, Cindy, you have a, Greg has a box of gloves, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so gloves we have. What we don't have and what will be needed is a Plexiglas window. Uh, in the clerk's office. All right. Uh, Ed and I discussed this earlier today. Ed thought that we could. Put a marking in there six foot away so that if, uh, the clerks could just open the usual window we have there, they can. Be six foot away with masks on, but not everybody may obey that, number one. Number two appears to be a, a, a requirement by the chief administrative judge. Now, I asked on behalf of not only our court, but all the justice courts in my capacity as president of the state magistrates. For the state to supply that because they're going to supply it in the superior court. So as long as they have bulk purchasing, why not buy some for the justice courts? They declined to do that. However, tomorrow I'll be on a conference call with the administrative judge. Where they're going to discuss a grant system to reimburse the village and towns. For expenses involved in getting the courts and the court offices ready for in-person contact. So. We can, for up to a thousand dollars. So if we can purchase the Plexiglas. Which I understand is now in short supply, the way the toilet paper and the hand sanitizer used to be. If we can purchase this Plexiglas and keep the receipt, I can apply for it to be reimbursed. Now also, if we're going to have a hearing. In the courtroom, you would need Plexiglas on the bench. Now, we have a very nice bench, it's a very beautiful piece of craftsmanship. We certainly don't want to drill holes in that. I have seen in one of the videos that are online from National Judicial College. Where a court in Nevada, which also had a beautiful bench like ours, mounted the Plexiglas in a. Perpendicular metal frame, and then those metal frames were attached with padded C clamps to the bench. So there's no marring of the bench. Again, if we do that and we're able to get the clamps and everything and Plexiglas. The whole package is under a thousand dollars, we apparently can get reimbursed. And that is a very Reader's Digest condensed version of what we're talking about. I, I will make again the pitch tomorrow during the call with the administrative judge to allow our traffic prosecutor. To take the not guilty pleas on his own and negotiate them and get them to me once they're negotiated. So we can get rid of that backlog. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions slash thoughts on that? So you mentioned that section eighteen oh six, would that be what you lobby to be? Waived or?
The governor and his. And his executive orders has delayed. Statutes of limitations, he has put off other deadlines. He has suspended other laws, so he'd ask that enforcement not be suspended. And that the document that our traffic prosecutor will have the defendant sign will include a knowing waiver of their appearance in court.
It seems, I think we can support that if you wanted to say, because I just don't see how we're ever going to parade sixty to two hundred people in. Our building in the real near future, you know, it's even with Plexiglas shields and face masks, that's. That was a burden on the building in the old days and staff.
Well, I'll tell you the scheme that somebody in Officer Court Administration came up with, which.
Anybody here, Jonah? We lost you.
How about now? This is why, this is why I hate computers. So the O C A came up with a scheme, the Officer Court Administration came up with a scheme. And I had a vigorous discussion with them about, in other words, I had an argument with them about it. They want to put in our court database software, a, a ability for us to quickly type texts. To defendants. And the idea would be, we've been only have like, you know, like. The courtroom now only has a couple of chairs sprinkled around, one six feet from each other. We bring in half a dozen people, they'd sit there, we'd take care of them, and as that one left, I would turn to the clerk. All right, and say, text the next person in, and they would come in from the car. All right? And then so on and so on, they're sitting out in the car. Well, that's nice on a nice summer's day with the windows open. That's nice on a nice spring day with the windows open. Or even in the summer, you turn the air conditioner on, that's great. But in the dead of winter, that's not going to be so hot. Okay? And even if you text them to come in, they're going to have to go through the magnetometer, they're going to have to have their mask on. If they don't have a mask on, they have to get some back to the car for a mask, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I don't think that's personally, I don't think that's workable. They were asking, by the way, they have not said this in the current. Document, they were asking that we had the Red Hood Police or court officers, if we have court officers, but our case is the Red Hood Police. Even during the business week, before anybody could come in, that a police officer had to be at the front gate, the way the court officers are in the Poughkeepsie, in the courts of record. Aiming a Star Trek kind of ice with the thermometer to read the temperature and to make sure the person has a mask. They're not requiring that now. All right. So that's where we are at the moment. Other questions?
Because like you said in our financial reports and, you know, we, and you mentioned too, there's a backlog. So how does the O C A help us address that backlog? It seems to me they've got a waived at eighteen oh six and some of us are processing remotely to me. I mean, it's. If you pull six people at a time and like, I don't see who would text people in the parking lot, that'd be a crazy situation, I think. But we got to get through that backlog, but we'll stay in touch. I know what I recommend to Jonah, we have really talented guys in the highway department. Plexiglas wise, we could conjure up ways to build whatever we need. When Jonah does mention phase two, I think there's a little disconnect between real world phase two and court phase two. In our world of phase two, that's tomorrow, Tuesday, that goes for restaurants and all that.
They said to us, the court is Thursday.
Yeah, the court seems to, just often for everybody listening, um, two or three days ago, I had, we do twice a week conference calls with the county of Duchess. And they did bring in some pretty high ranking folks from O C A. And they were explaining different requirements and so forth. A lot of them seemed to me to be geared toward where Jonah said, the courts of record, like the county office. Duchess County Court had, most places where, when they mentioned court officers, those are employees of the state of New York that guard and protect courts. Whereas we're here, we have part-time police officers who do a magnetometer scan. But I'm not sure that we're skilled or ready to be temperature checking and health checking, you know, and all that with the same people. So we do have to find a solution. Right now, we're letting the court come in, we're still working board in public with our doors locked, intercom access. I see that staying live at least this week with our building operating procedures. Possibly changing that where people intercom won't open. But even in the past, we used to get problems with court related questions coming in when court staff is not here. Regular staff to deal with them and really give them no great answer. And they, so now if I think we keep people calling and remote contacting the court. You know, somehow that would work. And we'll reexamine next Monday, you know, we let people in. At intercom button push to come in on a specific one court is here, but somehow we have to get that word out, you know. And Jonah's provided some hours, like when you think staff will be sitting. But it's not like our other offices where there's more continuous coverage. So we'll have to work on that. So it's complicated and it's a big piece for us because while we appreciate the justice that is served by the court. The judge and the staff, there's also a financial side to our operation that we, as a board. Monitor and measure and somehow we got to get that back in. And like we said at a few conferences. Our special prosecutor is willing to work with us, do more time from his office, but that would probably imply a few more dollars that we'd have to spend. Pay him to do that. So we don't have the solution yet, but it seems like it'll never be walk in sixty people. Process them same day, same night.
Miracle vaccine, not till either the miracle cure or the miracle vaccine.
So it seemed like the big court, O C A should morph that at eighteen oh six or the governor. We did write letters to governor on, we'll talk about that later tonight. Our installment plan on property tax payments and some penalty changes on property tax payments. They did respond eventually, it wasn't just us. I mean, what Jonah's talking about, it's got to be faced by every village justice court across the state. But thank you, Jonah. And what we had as part of this, part of the night. We did circulate the audit from the CPA firm, the court audit, the firm was Patterson, Koski, How and Bucci. I think it went to all of you digitally and it gives findings and so forth that we have to. Review with the court, which, like I said, we did circulate this to the justice itself and.
I never got a copy of that, Ed.
Pardon me?
I didn't get a copy of that.
I think I did either. Can you get it printed at the village building?
I've got a printed file version and. Did anybody else not get a copy?
I, I got it emailed June sixth.
Because I have a mental recollection of.
Sent to five recipients.
I'll check mine again then.
Yeah, because I would like to move on it. What it does, it gives findings. On different, what they test is essentially the processing timeline and safety of the court's handling of fines and bail. And nothing rises to any levels of concern. And it doesn't really get into those inventory of open and closed cases and processing. We pushed the auditor for that, but it's not within the. The description of what an annual quarter is about. So what I'd like to do, Jason, what you got it and. Did you get a chance to look it over or Jen?
Yes, I got a copy of it.
Jennifer, you still out there?
Yeah, I got it.
It's, I would just like to acknowledge that the board has received the audit and. We've copied the court with it and it's our obligation, like I said, just to send it up to the appropriate. Albany level authority that oversees the justice courts. It's an annual thing we do every year. The difference with this year, we switched auditing firms, just to mix it up a little bit. But I'm going to go ahead and. Get this sent to Albany, but I just want a motion that the village has reviewed the Patterson, Koski, Howe, Mucci. Independent Accountants Report. The orders of the Village of Red Oak Justice Court and it's received here. It's for the year January one through December thirty one twenty. So it's that calendar year that's audited. But that we reviewed it, discussed with the court and we'll send it up to Albany for their hand. Is there a second?
Second.
Any thoughts, discussion, questions? I'd say all in favor, I'll vote I. Anybody opposed? Okay, so Carrie, thank you. Yeah, let's see, we touched on tax installment plan, I just thought I'd refresh for folks.
Before you proceed on, was there any other questions for the court? Otherwise, I'll, I'll say good night.
Well, look at you. Okay.
Unless I could be of some, some service during the evening, but any questions about the court?
And you're on duty this week. Did you say Wednesday and Friday you're back?
I'll be in Wednesday morning and Friday morning. Yes. And of course, I'm always available by telephone call.
Sure. Thank you, Jonah.
All right, take care, everyone. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Well, we touched on it, I just put on the agenda again. We're already taking in tax bill payments, so they went out and they're starting to get paid. We did offer our residents, property owners, that July one and September one, split two installment option. Which we felt these days and these times could be something they might want to utilize. And then after we mailed our bills to the state of New York, the governor also put a twenty-one day exemption on penalty application. Because even in our system, if you miss your July one payment, you, you start incurring threat of penalty and interest. And same with the September one, if you miss it, but the governor extended those penalty periods twenty-one days on each. So anyway, we do offer that and, you know, it's a little more work on our part and our staff's part, but. We think that's what we're here for is to help our people. So we circulated that cover letter and we now saw things in it. Cindy's retirement is one of them and kind of treated it as a little free water bill newsletter type thing. Bigger ticket items discussed with. So anyway, that's out there and we're happy, we're glad we did that. The next thing I put was phase two street plans. Like we said, our phase two for the Mid Hudson region. Begins tomorrow, Tuesday. It's been announced by Cuomo. And what's kind of interesting, it was important to the village, we got clobbered. You know, when things got shut down, mid-March, restaurants went down, retail went down. Our street scene changed, barging home, you know, we're like someplace we never were before. So we've been anxiously waiting, what was originally to be phase three, when restaurants could do some version of in-house service. But it morphed into a phase two, which will only be outdoor service. And we put forth this plan to the county. Early on and then worked with some of our property owners that are landlords to restaurants. And we have these excess seating areas that were originally designed to be with phase three. But it's kind of great that phase two has this change that will affect it tomorrow, outdoor seating only. So restaurants, you still can't go get a meal with any limitations inside the building, you can't go outside. So the Bay Riley family funded and built, installed a common seating area. We've got Key Bank on board, they're going to put something. More like independent tables is what they're looking at in the green lot. We've been talking, what, pardon me?
They're already there.
Are they good? Okay. Just kind of a coup because they tend to be corporate and a little slowish on the action, but. CJ, the branch manager picked up on it and realized it's a good thing. And then we're dealing with what we submitted to the county, relaxing temporarily for ninety days. And the executives announcing probably two or three o'clock today, an enabling emergency order, like an overview of emergency order that. We're going to relax our sections two hundred dash, I think it's sixteen, thirty-three and thirty-eight, they deal with site plan, signage and parking guidelines. The goal is to enable restaurants to get some excess seating out and. It'll work in the summer from June here, ninth tomorrow through, we're thinking September nine fifteen, you know, somewhere still warm enough in the daylight. To try to get a little vibrancy back on the street. Today I was talking with Yum Yum and we gave them the okay, we're going to take our two. Seating park benches out of there, their alcove, let them put some tables there. So you will see things bumping up on the street that are okay. And it's going to be okay for short term. There's a state liquor authority component that we don't really have get any control or say in. They have to deal with that themselves, essentially because they're serving, they might be serving outside of their original indications with your licensing. We're hopeful with the county and everybody will get, that'll work out with the S L A. So it'll be exciting. And I'm thinking, guys and ladies of. Somehow through our celebrations, doing some six-foot separation, live music concerts on weekend night or nights, just to make a little atmosphere or something. Probably up at the Bay Riley area where there's some power and. Just attract a few folks over the summer months. So we're going on that, talking to some of our artists, musician type folks and. No one big act, no big thing and stuff, just local guys, local bands that want to work for some money. I think it'd be fun, we could all go out and hang out a little bit, enjoy outdoor seating. What happens next, you know, phase three, phase four, they've got to come in, the thinking is even phase four. Can we get the vaccine or the medication that makes the illness less serious? But we're working hard, we've been doing a lot in that regard. So I'm, I'm happy with that and, you know, depending on the merchant restaurant. They're, they're doing as much takeout as they can and hopefully the weaker ones can survive. You know, some of the stronger ones are just doing fine. But if you do see any complaints, there is a New York State complaint form. Technically, our code enforcement, like Jay hinted at before, can get involved. But we're not looking to make huge impediments, we're looking to make it flow and if they're making a mistake, correct them, you know, not. One or two that got a little close to the edge and worked with them. The key word is, all these things are temporary modifications. We're not exempting or accepting our zoning law forever or. Looking to deal with major construction changes, it's more put something out that's fun outside eating and. Next on the agenda, I have redesign news, review our website, remote worker situation. Next on the agenda, I have redesign news, review our website, remote worker situation, staff transitions. A lot of words there. Um, essentially we're going to keep with limited building access in line with the phases and where we're at with health COVID nineteen world. Um, the court is functioning a little bit, but even in the old days, they were not often in the building as far as their staff. We're working, we will, I forget how much we talked about last month, but um Larissa completed her first level, ABC level. She's going to be tasked and she has been tasked with working remotely doing fire inspections under nickel to the edge of Clark. Um, but taking that over from Lara on the bookkeeping, processing billing and actual inspection work once Clark feels she's good enough. Uh, you know, kind of skill sets and then um she'll also be a runner, so to speak, for Clark on daytime. Clark will be coming in. We're pushing Z three Gary back off. We talked about that in budget season where it was an interim that stayed long because we didn't find another great option. But there's nothing wrong with that firm. It's just they're expensive for us. And if you look at our budget, you can see where it took some hits there, but it was just something we had to eat. Um, so we'll have Clark coming in evenings. Um, we're going to have, we're going to stay with this concept of flexibility, meaning remote booking, remote um setup of inspections, supplying of documents and data as much digitally as we can and using mini city as much as we can to its fullest. And so far, I mean, they were here today. I came in prepping for the meeting and they're working. Clark was going out to do some inspections and um, I think it's the work. So I'm happy with that. Um, we're looking to keep with our plan, like we talked last month, really opening the building at eleven. Um, our treasurer will come, our new treasurer will be moving from a part-time employee to treasurer when Cindy leaves on June. Um, he has a certain schedule he'll keep, but they're not going, the treasurer's not going to be interacting that much with the public. That'll happen from eleven to four when our general administrative support staffer here. That's what we're looking at from a lot of levels. We created some of these redesigns even before COVID hit. And I think it positioned us pretty well to weather what COVID is doing to us and reduce access and reduce staffing here in the building. Um, it's keeping in compliance with our effort to keep more part-time staff in the near future. And you know, as we said, we'll monitor finances and see if any other redesign is needed, but right now we we'll look at some options at highway and so forth, but we're not looking to furlough layoff or dismiss anybody. We'll just live with what we're uh given right now. I had no, some note they're planning zoning board meetings. They're all happening remotely and like Jay said, with some guidance meetings from the Planning Federation, the admin people and the members, we gave them a few practice dry runs and they're adjudicating and they're handling cases. So it's it's been working. We do need um. I want to replace Ray Toll, who's moving up the treasurer from planning. Not that it's a direct conflict, but I think it has the appearances of we should probably move him off. And then we have an opening on Z B A with Beekman leaving. So we've been talking to individual board members, our board members, to see if you have any suggested candidates. I have a few that came to light in the course of our public hearings on the G B D and M U changes. A few people got active. Some have said, well, thanks, but they retired and moved here and didn't really want to spend a lot of time on any volunteer work. But um, so if anybody has any ideas, but I'd like to really get these filled here in June. It's uh, I think the planning board meets on the eleventh and the Z B A meets again on the twenty fifth. So um we won't get anybody by the eleventh for planning, to my knowledge, but um, if you guys could think who who would be good on there. Um, what I'd like to do next then is I have a bullet item sewer review. My notes to myself here and then we'll get Brent and his report that we put aside into our brains. But um part of our reporting has always been that the Red Oak Commons owner, it's a corporately owned entity, but Ken Carney is the individual behind that project that many, many years ago. From day one, he's been willing to donate over acreage and the existing sewage treatment plant that handles that maintenance unit facility is key to our whole plan. Um, and like Brent reported, and you all know, like two, three months ago, we got our Speedy's permit from the E C. So we're ready. We're getting closer and closer. It's always been a timing thing. We never wanted to operate it too long because we need to um uh minimize the expense of the village. Carney, once it becomes on by us, is going to pay a fee to the village as the first customer of the sewer plant. But it's still going to be a cost to the village. Um, like we said, we're talking to C three N D V R I. That's um the operator of the plant right now. And but what we did in in Carney, someday, he hopes, he bought the old Anderson Commons project, which I do mean Anderson Commons, that's on the Baxter fist. Uh, I guess it's more Baxter area on the east side of the village, some inside the village, some out in the town. Um, he still intends and hopes to develop something there. There's some thinking with COVID nineteen that there will be some surge of people looking for backyards and trying to get out of the metro urban areas. Um, so the developers are kind of thinking that could happen. Right now, we bring our sewer plant line to the community center. And that's as far east as we go. He has written us a letter under section one forty five dash twenty of our sewer law where he's asking to be put on the list for first next phase customers. Like, you know, we call this phase one of our sewer project. Um, we do hope in some day to expand it. But he would like to be refiled or requested. It's not a hard, fast rule. But he gets himself in the queue to be added on and and there's no guarantee. We have certain capacity built in. We have certain things existing. But um, there's no commitment from us, but I told him we would read into the record acknowledging his letter asking for consideration as the village goes to another phase, which as we all know, the first phase has to be built. It's we we can't add uh more customers to this one because of technicalities with the funding agencies and the construction costs. Um, we we can't build them in now. And there's nothing to build to right now, but we'll have a stub nearby and his firm, like we do with the Waterloo. It's it's not going to be a giveaway program. It's just he's requested to consider his development company, whatever it might be named for Anderson Commons. Probably have that name here somewhere. Um, I told him we'd put him on the queue and um.
But just to clarify too, Ed, there's within the phase one, within the wastewater treatment plant, we have certain amount of surplus capacity within the plant and we did that so we could allow for future growth of the village and um not having to enlarge the plant. So um, and that's done by request on a request basis, based on the capacity that we have. So Mr. Carney and Anderson Commons was the first what Ed was talking about to jump on. It wouldn't be a phase two. It'd be a connection that he would put in by himself, but he would use some of the surplus capacity that we would have in the plant. He's the first one that kind of asked for some some with the plan.
Okay, thanks, Brent.
I just had a question if there was any prioritization for in-village customers as far as next phases of wastewater treatment plant use?
That that was the intention of the of the surplus capacity. So we tried to build in as much as we could um within the constraints of the budget that we had to work with.
Right.
Oh, we did factor in what what it would be with full build out with restaurants coming in where possible hotel that we had talked about. Um, so we think we have enough to accommodate all of it at that point without having to enlarge the plant. We're also looking at a phase two. So that the town could eventually hook up into that, which would give us more capacity on their neck rather than ours. So.
Right. And then conceivably, the plant could be expanded even more in some later years.
So so part of the the donation agreement um with Reda Common Sewer Works Corporation is the existing wastewater treatment plant. It only has a limited capacity. We're expanding that. And along with that plant comes about ten acres of land that we could use to expand the plant on as needed basis. So the treatment plant is a modular type of system, so we can keep adding on and on until we're filled up. So even with full build out, this is something we had to do for for U S D A is to kind of look at full build up potential of what we can do in the village with our own T and D possibly on the north side of the village. But full build out of the Red Oak Town's initial neighborhood district. So that's what we're looking. That's down the road. So we're just trying to get in ground right now.
Yep. Thanks.
Yes, I thought in line with our sewer law, he can do this. And he does call it, as Brent and Charlie were talking, he does references probably as the Anderson Commons development. So um, he has a name, a corporate name or an LLC or anything, but reference. And that's been submitted to the village probably what fifteen years ago, Brent? It was somehow active.
There's total forty six units. I think eight of those will have their own septic systems. And the rest would be, you know, with the surplus. So if you factor it, what we're using as a benefit unit. So we're looking at gallons per day that's serviced and looking at the capacity of that.
Right, so we'll just file his letter in with the sewer paperwork and we'll respond acknowledging receipt of it and we'll be guided by and the the already existing parameters in one forty five dash twenty and any wording we have about expansion. So but in the big picture, I think we're going to get this donation in the next three or four weeks. So we're going to be in
A sewer.
Sewer business and um Ed and then uh we really get in and segue to we've been operating a water system for quite a while with ups and downs and try different variations of redesign and handling and operators. And we'll have a sewer system. We'll be working with in the early phases, just with one custom tenant, meaning the ninety six apartments at Red Oak Commons. And so we need, like we said, we're requesting from C three N D or V R I. That's on the dongo has two hats he wears. He consults and he uses V R I as his um corporate um main service provider. But in the interim, we're putting with like Brent referencing his report. Um, we still feel like we don't have a total overlord of water. Now we're going to have sewers. For instance, this flushing project we've been trying to do for a long time, get this one done. Um, and so I did get a letter from Fernando. I think it was attached in the emails that went around. He said his C three N D hat, which he's right here in the village Red Oak is where he lives and he's moving shortly to the town. But he'd be willing to consult and he's saying for five zero fifty dollars an hour for any extra things that we don't do now with paying for the water operator of V R I. Because we're trying to figure out we might recall with in-house folks getting credentials and moving toward being our operator didn't really pan out. We've looked at using our engineers to consult, but that gets to be really expensive. It's like using Z three back to do wood enforcement. It's just not really achievable by us financially. Um, so somewhere I pulled up, I think on my phone, I think it was in that packet when Fernando gave his um data report, he had a third attachment talking about C three N D. And I know Jay may be our wordsmith. You know, Elon Musk named his kids some hybrid of letters and numbers. Does anybody have a clue what C three N D could stand for? But I don't know.
That's his kids. He's got three daughters.
Yeah, I know Elon Musk, but I'm curious what's what Fernando picked the name of his company, C three N D. Uh, does it have some meaning to him? But he says he would do administrative support as needed. Not to say we're going to use them all the time for everything, but um he says for fifty dollars an hour. So um that'd be separate. Yeah, I I think it's worth it because meter issue, different things where we don't really have the staff sophistication right now to go out and work it with our staff. And um, it brings the bigger question to us. You know, we're also in the sewer business. It's going to be a whole, whole lot of admin and um so it's a little bit down the line as far as the really heavily logged users, but they're going to be used in four or six weeks. So I'd like to move ahead with that. And it would come, right now we have a sewer budget and a water budget. It's not anything we didn't plan on. It's just um, we have to get him a little more active on if you can.
You said he did give you a proposal, Ed, for that?
There were three attachments. He had the data sheet on the other Charlie's report. And then there was um, it's not for the sewer operation. It's for consulting on water and sewer. Um.
Administrative support, he calls it.
Yeah. Um, what I envisioned us doing on the plant, we know the number. I think it's around nineteen, looking on my wall here. I think it's on nineteenth Avenue. They charge Red Oak Commons to operate the plant. We built that into our budget for sewer. But it's getting real, getting close. It just makes sense. He's been the guy doing it. He knows our system on the supply side. And he knows all of us. And it's, to me, it's a professional service. Um, we've asked who else is out there? There are some water operators, but these guys are real familiar with our waterside already. Anyway, I think we're okay with procurement and with with continuing. I put another bullet point, online payment. Hoping to get that live here. Taxpayers. Water quarter, it could be live, but work with our software company on that. Um, I did want to go to executive session. Um, police, union labor negotiations. We're entitled to do that. Is Chris our admin guy still on board here somewhere?
Yep.
We came up with one alternative. The board could head to a separate link. Or I'm looking at who's in attendance. Let's see, William and a Will Noonan and a couple of people that are not board members. Let's talk for a minute board and with our admin person, the non-board folks could ask them to drop off. It's like.
We do public comment first?
Yeah, I guess I forgot that part, didn't I? But um, sorry about that. Um. There it is. On the backside, I'm gonna say. Thank you, Cindy. Um. Yeah, I'd rather, what I was going to say is attending member, attending non-members would be welcome back to the current link. But um, let's go back for a moment. Let's see public comment. And as usual, just say who you are and I think we know most everybody showing on this here. Chris can help us out if we don't know and we need some help. But um we've talked a lot and there's several residents from our community out there on the attendance list. Anybody have a question, comment, thought, idea?
I have a question about the sewer uh project and um.
You are Will Noonan, I think.
I'm sorry, I'm Will Noonan, yes.
What's your question?
The question is, you you mentioned ten acres. Uh, you have ten acres available there. Uh, where is that ten acres?
Right now, the plant is located on the property of Red Oak Commons.
I think that's near my back.
Straight back. So it's it's, there's also a um, a D E C wetland that this will not be part of. So that's a whole parcel that we we got. So it's if you were to go into, I guess, Morgan's Way. Straight back, straight to, that's where the treatment plant right now exists. So the new treatment plant will just be sister to the the existing one. It'll keep sistering as we go, as we expand.
Okay, but.
If you wanted, Will, we could, in the conference room, we have all kinds of charts and maps we could show you. It's on kind of the southern end, I would call those the ten acres. Do you know where the current plant is?
Oh, yeah. Oh yeah, yeah.
That's where it is.
That's where it will be.
That current plant, particularly when the foliage isn't on the trees, there's a noise that comes from that that tends to be annoying at times. If you're expanding that, will that noise be enhanced?
Hopefully not.
Yeah, what's the noise sound like, Will?
The pumps going or?
Bean going, like, I'm going to say a turbine kind of thing.
Because there's carbon filtration that moves air through carbon filters and the new plant would have a similar thing, but I don't.
We'll talk to our, we'll talk to our engineers about that to see if there's something we can do.
Okay.
Yeah, because we were never really described that it should be noisy, it's more moving liquid and then and just moving air through a filter, but.
This is actually the first time I think we're hearing about it.
It seems, it seems, it's obviously not, we don't hear it during the, during this time of year and the summer when the foliage is on trees. But in the beginning of spring and in the winter, there is, there is a noise, I'm going to say it's, it's not. It's minimal, minimal but annoying.
All day long.
We'll discuss it with our engineer.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, this is David Pearson, Village Resident.
Pearson.
Thank you for putting on the speed monitor on Park Avenue.
Yeah, good.
A few days.
Yeah, I told them to get it over there and the good part too is like, you know, it records data, so it'll say, you know, fifty cars went through an hour or one hundred cars went through and it logs their speed all the time.
I see the county data on Park Avenue, so I'm aware of some of the counts and the speeds there.
Have you noticed any slowing of traffic, David?
Nobody was going fast today that I saw.
See Patrick Kildbran is on, I don't know if he's.
Just two more things. Could somebody help me get to have a Ring Central meeting for Village Green?
We could, when do you want to have it?
A week or so.
Yeah, we have our tech guy, we usually just
It'll be on a Saturday, right?
Yeah, Saturday would probably be best, yeah. And I noticed you saw, you sent
Michael's available.
That's when Michael's best available, yeah, although he could be available during the week, I'll ask him.
He can be, yes, okay, Saturday, we'll work on it.
Okay, and the last item, I searched for how to get onto this meeting tonight and on the Village website, I couldn't find it and then and I thought maybe you could have put it on the agenda for the, for the meeting that I was able to get to on the Village site, but I finally found it on the internet for a Village Board meeting and got your, got the connection on.
Yeah, we do task our support staff to put it on our site, I think. Somebody saying something, I heard something. I don't know, I see like maybe Steve's, our truck, you still on there? Some people got in, we don't seek to hide it, I'll look again, but I
I know you weren't trying to hide it, but
jumps out where they actually put it on, you know, like, do you have to go to departments or meeting? I don't go look myself after asking to do it, so I should double check that next time. Maybe next time we don't need to do these, who knows, but um, we'll see where we're in July, whatever it would be. We'll definitely do the workshop in Zoom. Looks like July thirteenth would be our next board meeting. Okay, well, thank you, so up actually, Village Green, are you suggesting June thirteenth? Like this Saturday or a week from Saturday?
I think David wants to maybe pull the, pull the officers to see when they're available and then we'll set up a date.
Let me check with my members and come find a date and I'll let you know.
Yeah, the way it works is we usually like to have Chris help. He sets up the link and then he might not have to sit and watch yours once you get going. What's that?
I don't think he'd want to sit for our meeting.
That's pretty quick though, it's a lot quicker than
He has a good enough time with your meeting.
We don't want to burn them out. Anyway, right.
Go ahead, thank you.
Anything else from any other non-board folks? So I was moving ahead with executive session, I don't know if Chris Donnie, if you have a suggestion, if if we asked if we could see folks drop off. Would that be a good enough read that we're in executive session and folks, if you want to drop off and come back in at like quarter to nine, eight forty-five, if we see you pop back in on the link, we could tell you to wait five more minutes or we could tell you we're done and we'll wrap up the meeting. Chris, do you have a thought on that?
Yeah, that works, so we'll go to that separate meeting, I'll have to end this, this one.
What I was saying, Chris, was if I can see folks drop off from our participant screen, can I be convinced they're gone, like?
Yeah, yeah.
So you would have to stop the recording too, right?
Right, yeah.
Good thought, so right now I see Ray, why we consider not part of the board, I see Pat Hildebrand is on here. I don't think we need Pat for the executive session, it's, you on there, Pat?
Ed, I'll drop off, Ed, this is Will Noonan.
Okay, if you want to pop back in in fifteen minutes, you know, we'll
I think I'll say goodnight, it's been a pleasure.
Okay, take care.
Thank you.
Now, Chris, do we have to uh?
Yeah, so what I'll do is I'll have to end this meeting so we can start the other one. And so I'll
Oh wait, let me, let me ask, can you leave this meeting and come back, you yourself only?
No, because with my own account, we can't have two meetings overlapped.
Well, maybe, maybe we can let you go. If I saw somebody try to get back in, I'd see him pop up, right? And I would just tell them we're in executive session and hang up.
Yeah, so, so after the executive session, we'll go back to this link, right, and we'll start it up and then if people want to come back in fifteen minutes, they'll they'll know.
I think, I think they all decided they're just going to leave. I didn't, um, does any board member, I think, I just didn't stay on this link and I don't see big executives. We probably want Chris to leave and then I can wrap up the meeting.
So
Somebody, something
I'll just make you the host now. Because if I leave then, as the host, then it'll stop for everyone, so let me, I'll give that to you.
Ed, do you want me to leave the meeting? I mean, I'll stay, that's fine.
Yeah, I'm just looking at my list who's here. No, you can stay on to me.
Alright, so I just made you the host, when I leave, it'll stop recording too. But now, when I leave, it won't end it for all, so.
Okay.
Alright, yeah, have a great night, see you guys.
Later.